Thank you. We'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting, Monday, May 18th, together today. And I'd like to have us go to our faith and remember the Sheriff's family. And then I'd also like to have you add Commissioner King's family. His wife is recovering down in Indianapolis after some surgery. So let us stand and have a minute of silence, and then we'll call off the pledge. Thank you. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a good attendance today, and we'll have a roll call. Mr. Craig.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. King. Ms. Rigan.
Present.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
I just want to make sure that this is looking right. Okay. Thank you. And then we'll entertain a motion for the approval of minutes made for.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from last meeting.
I'll second those. Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, now we have a presentation from Judge Dowling.
Don't do anything for a minute, because I've got to get this recorder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Yeah.
I didn't do it in the minutes thing, I just started it going.
No, it didn't work.
I can give you a DVD.
Okay.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Kim Dowling, and I'm Judge in Circuit Court II. I have good news for you today. I've been working with our court administrator to bring Odyssey to all counties of the state of Indiana. So we received really good news at the end of the term, and that is that Delaware County has received grant funding to bring Odyssey to Delaware County. So as a part of that funding, the state has agreed to provide Delaware County with all new computers for the court staff, courtrooms, and for many in the clerk's office. We will also receive a new server, new scanners for all offices in the court system. The scanner that's currently being used in the clerk's office should be sufficient. Plus, we will be receiving new, I forget all the terms, barcode readers, printers, and scanners to be able to read the barcodes that will be printed off for all the files. There are many advantages to using Odyssey. One of the advantages is that it links us to all other counties in the state that has Odyssey. That will enable law enforcement to have faster access to information about defendants, people that are, that have files, charges already filed against them. It will also enable our probation department to receive information about defendants as they do pre-sentence investigations and are looking up information for the courts. It will help the courts by connecting us to all the other courts that are Odyssey counties within the state. And there are numerous other benefits that I can read off to you, I don't want to take up your time with that, but I'm excited to say that we can move forward from here. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Ms. Groggins is also here and would be happy to try and answer if it's something that I can't answer. But we have with us today an ordinance and a memorandum of understanding that need to be signed by the commissioners. And assuming that you are willing to approve that, then we can have counsel sign that. As soon as it's all signed off on, then we can have the equipment ordered. Our goal is to have a rollout of this by January. Besides the savings that it will present to the county and all of the new equipment, and I can tell you that all the computers are so old that we're already having them crash and we're having to replace them, we've had three or four this year. But in addition to that, the county pays CSI $40,000 a year in maintenance costs, and we will not have to pay that with Odyssey. Odyssey is completely free, it's provided by the state, and so it will save tens of thousands of dollars to the county.
Thank you. I heard it was in the works, and I appreciate all the hard work that your staff and the training will be done in January 1st. I look forward to that.
Right. So I've got the ordinance and the memorandum of understanding, so who would like this? You want me to present it to Steve?
Steve would need to look it over, so is something that we could put on the June 1st, or you want to do it today?
Let me take a look at it.
Okay.
Judge Dowling, do you have a dollar figure of what this grant will, do you value that?
I can tell you that it's going to be approximately $90,000 in equipment, and it will be the $40,000 a year in savings on the maintenance fees.
That's great, thank you.
We appreciate the state stepping forward in the business.
Exactly.
I didn't realize that you couldn't talk to, you know, email other counties.
You can email, but this is a direct link, and so by just even looking at one defendant's name, it would pull up information on any other county that has Odyssey.
This is actually a resolution rather than an ordinance, it will only take one passage. It is really, in my opinion, something you could approve today, because all it does is indicates commissioner's support for the implementation of the Odyssey system. It doesn't obligate us otherwise, this will have to go to counsel. And I did review the materials that I received last week with respect to the Supreme Court's determination that Odyssey is the way to go for all counties.
Oh, yeah.
I would recommend, and I'll pass it down, that you consider passing the resolution today.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that sounds like such a win-win for us.
Sherry, speak up, please.
I say it sounds like such a win-win for us, so to move it along, we should help them out.
Can I have two, Steve, that you've got the memorandum of understanding as well?
Yeah, thank you.
So I need both of those documents signed.
Yeah.
I'll have to get that back to you, because we'll have to have it first.
Okay.
So Mr. Shannon, what would you like to do with this?
I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution and accept the memorandum of understanding.
And the resolution number is 2015-015. And I'll call you, Lannan.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The wellness professional group is here. Jane Ellery.
I'm Jane Ellery, and I have Nathan Taylor with me here today. We're here representing a group in the community called the Delaware County Wellness Professionals. And we mostly work with work sites to try to improve health and well-being at the employee level. And the Delaware County employees were one of the first groups to actually achieve a recognition from the State Chamber of Commerce as a well workplace. It's called the Chief Well Award. And as we move, we're actually, as a community, as a county, trying to become the first county in Indiana to receive what the Indiana Chamber is calling a Healthy Community Award. And what that requires is that we have 15 employer groups that are recognized with the Chief Well status. And we currently have more than any other county except for Marion, and we're well on our way to being recognized first, which is good. But we're more excited about what that means for our community rather than the recognition itself. And what we would like to do today is reaffirm the county's employee group's commitment to employee wellness, because one of the things that we will definitely need as we go forward is to have the certification continue. And it's getting to the point where we're going to need to resubmit the information. So we're anxious to work with Jamie Bane and the Health Department and others who are interested in continuing to move this forward.
Sounds like such a wonderful project. And how many, are you close to getting your 15?
We actually have seven who have been through the certification. The Youth Opportunity Center, where Nathan is the wellness coordinator, is actually going to get the highest, is working to be recognized at the highest level, so they'll be our first five-star award winner. And we've got about five others that are already in the pipeline to be recognized. They've already submitted their papers. We have about five or six others. So we're very, very close, and we think we can do this.
Is there a yearly fee?
It's like $300 at the county level, so there is a small fee. It's not to be recognized, it's to be a member of the wellness camp.
Nearly, okay.
Yes.
And this is something that if we were to get an intern maybe from Ball State, they could oversee this, because we are moving our HR down to a bigger facility soon. But it would take a lot of effort, I'm sure.
I, we can certainly look at organizing an internship responsibility. I know we've had that in the past with different individuals. We've got several groups on campus, including our human resource managers, our exercise science groups, and certainly my graduate students that do internships each year, so we can certainly look at that. We have done that in the past.
And I believe you meet on the third Wednesday at?
Yes, the third Wednesday. The D.C. Wellness Professionals Group meets on the third Wednesday at open door at 3:30. So we would look to have someone from the county represented at that. And one of the things that that group does is try to support each other. So one of the things, we do a workplace wellness activity around Walk Indiana that becomes very easy for employer groups to participate in. And some of you may have attended the All-In activity earlier to try to look at emotional well-being. So we look to have activities and host those activities to make it easy, easier to even without interns.
Okay. Well, thank you, I did attend that.
Yes.
I thought you did a very nice job for your first one, and it got me thinking that we should be a member of that, and so.
And the local one is free.
Yes.
So there's no cost to come and participate in our third Wednesday activities at 3:30. So any employer group that's out there, we would love to have people come together, because we share ideas of what all's going on in the community.
Do you have an application? Did you bring anything today?
I did not bring anything. I did not think about, when you invited me, what the meeting actually was until I walked in the door. So I apologize.
Well, that's okay. It's just to let us know what we can do to be making our community, and especially our employees, all of us, a little healthier, to keep our costs down.
Absolutely. And one of my classes worked with this group, with the county in general, a few years back when we presented an initial wellness program that I know there are some sides in the hall, or the stairwells that I still see, and some different things. So we look forward to working directly with some of the ones that'll be more directly affiliated, and we'll get information from them.
Well, send us an application or a little brochure, and when Mr. King gets back, June 1st, we can have some good news for you. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have the, Candice, Candice?
Kent, it's Kent. Hi, Candace Kent, Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District. We are here today, I've got a few of my supervisors here, Ron Orba and Josh Greaver. We are here to request funding from the Economic Development Fund, the amount of $80,000 for the next three years. And this is basically to keep us staffed and keep our organization running. So just a little bit about what we take care of. Major concerns in the county, degraded waterways, a loss of our soil. We've got loss of our prime land through development, destruction of wildlife habitats and woodlands, uninformed public and poor drainage, I think we all know a little bit about that. So what we would like to do over the next three years is continue developing programs to address these issues. We've got nitrogen testing in corn crops. And we are really fortunate, as a soil and water district, to be a part of the State Association of SOUCDs, which makes us competitive for things like Clean Water Indiana funding. We also partner with Indiana State Department of Ag, which brings us the infield advantage nitrogen testing. We also do agricultural workshops on a variety of conservation, cover crop, demo plots. We would like to be able to bring more grant funding to the county for cost share dollars, to actually put conservation on the ground, which is why we're here. We would like to see more education about these issues, both adults and children. You know, we've got septic systems failing, we've got just a whole host of problems that we would really like to address in the future. Log jams, bus tours, and canoe trips, which we've done before in the past, is a really good eye-opener for the community. So basically, you know, investing in soil and water is really going to invest in your county and in your natural resources, and the possibilities are endless for conservation. And it's really, the opportunities are there for conservation, and we'd really like to continue developing all these programs. Without funding for staff, solid funding, then, you know, we will cease to be able to bring more grant dollars in and to keep developing these programs, so.
Well, I really do appreciate you coming today, and first, I really like this picture on the front page of your flyer. And it's nice to know that we're trying to do what is right, you know, for down the river. I mean, it's just so important, but I am sorry to say that $80,000 did kind of set me back. I was hoping we could find maybe 15 or 20 to give you.
Anything would help.
Anything is better, well, thank you.
Yes. And we really, I mean, our ultimate goal is to clean the waterways, preserve our soil, educate the public, provide this community betterment, that people are going to want to live here, and that we care, and that we want to clean up the trash, and provide a clean area for people to live, and that's really what it's about.
And these log jams, they're just, well, matter of fact, Angie, we cleaned one, what, about a year or two ago over at the High Street Bridge?
Last year.
And you would not believe how many logs are laying there right now. I was over there making some telephone calls.
The White or the Mississippi?
The White River.
The White River.
Just over our High Street Bridge.
Right.
Uh-huh. And?
Yep, and DNR has lake and river enhancement grants for log jam removals. These are all things that we could continue to go after.
Has the soil and water ever used an intern from Ball State?
Yes, yes, we have, in the past.
I know you're all just, you're, I had a very nice meeting out there the other day. You're doing so much more with less. I was very impressed, too, because Ron and I were talking about that machine that I was wanting the county to buy that would clean out the side ditches, because we have so many side ditches, 1,600 miles, that are not getting cleaned out. And it's so sad that people, well, the snow removal, I was out over on the 1200 North, or Eaton Albany Pike, and the lovely homes that the snow is coming off their driveway, right down to the road, lane, going down to the creek, and folks, that's not good. I mean, our roads around here are just terrible. And Ron kind of let me know that if we could get that machine, he could get some summer help maybe to go out and use it, because it's bad out there. But what we're kind of doing today, some stuff like this, when tabling it, and Mr. King, when he gets back, and I just don't know where we could find that kind of money, but it sure is needed, that's for sure.
I think it's great what your organization does, and I agree with President Rigan that $80,000 is a lot of money. I would make a motion we table this, and we'll look and see what we can find, or if we can find anything.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes. Thank you very much. We appreciate your board members coming today with you. Okay, now we have some contracts, supplement agreement. Mrs. Moyer, would you like to fill us in on this first one?
Sure. First agreement is with HWC Engineering. This is supplemental number two. This is for design services to replace Bridge 161, the old metal bridge by Smithfield. And it also includes approximately a half mile of road realignment design. I have our engineer Jacob from HWC if you have any questions for him. But the contract is for not to exceed $439,064.
Well, I did have some questions about this. That's the first article. And then reading Article V, the design fee, that's $278,000. Then the Article VI, $160,000, for a total of $878,000, so.
No, no.
No?
No.
No, then explain that, then.
The total, including all the first, the first, the original agreement and the supplemental and this, total not to exceed $439,064.
Which agreement is it that there's two in here? Is it the supplemental or the regular?
It's the supplemental. 3.1 showing the total cost.
Of the?
But the 3.21 and 3.22 breaks it down, Sherry.
Is that what it is?
Uh-huh. Those total up to $439,064.
Oh. This one?
For our first one, but it says supplemental agreement in the heading.
Like this?
I don't see any money. Oh, there it is, there it is.
Okay, well, that makes me feel a little bit better. I was kind of amazed that this project's been on the books for 14 years, and we are finally, and then it would probably be designed, or the contract would probably be letted in 2017?
The anticipated letting date is January 2018.
18, okay. Okay, well, that makes me feel a little bit better. What's your pledge?
I'll make a motion we accept the agreement.
Okay, I'll second that. Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes. Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much, Dan. Now, we go to the HWC Engineering Agreement.
This is a renewal. We have an annual contract with HWC Engineering for General Services. And it's not to exceed $15,000.
And then I see on page Exhibit A, that if they do anything else, it would be negotiated verbally.
Right. We would not go beyond that amount that we agree upon.
I did not see in here this thing. It is scheduled to go through May 31st, and I've let some people know that I'm not happy that we don't have a full-time engineer with our 800 miles, or 1,600 miles of ditches, our 100, how many bridges?
194.
194 bridges, 14 buildings that need lots of maintenance and some policies written to keep the maintenance. And we still are having people come in part-time, engineers on call. So I would really like to approve this with a December 31st, 2015 ending. I don't know if Sherry's going to get her way or not, but at least it would be risen So if I don't have a second, I guess I didn't get my word. You want to table this also? We really can.
Can't table it. I'll, we need to get these agreements approved. If you want to make these agreements to December 31st, I'll second that.
Well, that's a start. I'll second that, then, too.
I'll make that motion.
You'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that, December 31st, 2015.
Probably would need to propose that to HWC. They proposed this contract, we could propose that we terminated on December 31st, 2015, and then when that date arrives, we could see where we stand.
Yeah. Does anyone here from HWC?
I have Jacob here. I don't know if he can.
Jacob.
Jacob Eisenberg, HWC. I will take that back to my supervisors and provide you a revised copy for the June 1st meeting.
And it's not that we don't appreciate all your help and work.
I understand. I don't have the authority to change the contract on our end, but I can.
I didn't see this until I picked up my agenda on Thursday afternoon. I think it was too late to call anybody, or?
Are you not this Tuesday?
Well, I didn't read it then, how's that?
I understand.
I didn't read the fine trail.
I can take it back to our.
I appreciate that.
And we'll get you a revised copy for the next commissioners' meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
You want to change your motion to table that until, or what do you want to do?
Put it on the agenda for June 1st.
No, I think, I think.
It's June 6th.
Well, you could go ahead and approve this from our perspective, and then we'll have the contract table.
Or when is the, when is the next meeting?
June 1st.
Is it June 1st?
Oh, it is June 1st. I can wait for it.
We can wait.
Let me retract my motion, then I'll make a motion we table this. So we'll see.
Do you want to do a second?
Yeah, we do need a second. I don't think I will.
Did you say no, Sherry?
I said no. I don't think I will. Now what, Mr. Murphy?
Well, you have two choices, I think. One is just to let it die for now, and we'll bring it back on June 1st, or you could go back to the previous motion, approve the commissioner's recognition of this as an agreement until December 31st, and wait for HWC to present the contract.
Yeah, I like that.
All right, so move.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes. Thank you.
So to approve from December 15th?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then we have another one, General Service Agreement with Triad.
This is another agreement to renew for a not-to-exceed amount of $7,500.
I might ask, why do we have two different agencies?
It depends on their availability in the various tabs.
Some are better than others, some.
Well, I wouldn't say that, I just, it just depends on the situation and its availability.
Is anyone from Triad here?
No, Jonathan's not here. The rates have not changed, the hourly rate's the same, it's the same amount as last year. We've never overspent these contracts, we've always been under anything.
I think we should treat them the same as the other company.
Can you contact them and see if they could get us an agreement?
A revised one for the next meeting?
A revised one, yeah.
Sure.
December.
Not a problem.
That's your motion?
That's my motion, revise this contract also.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes. Thank you, Angie. Angie does a very good job for us keeping us track on all these projects. She has a book she carries around that's that thick, and she's on top of all this money, because someone has to be in charge of spending all those 80/20 splits, right, Angie?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move down to the agreement for the Okay, then we'll move down to the agreement for the economic development purposes.
President Reagan, Commissioner Henry, good morning. I'm Brad Bookout with Augusta Consulting. I appreciate your consideration today. However, I did receive a text message yesterday from Commissioner King letting me know that he would not be here today and he asked me to formally pull this agreement from the agenda. I did contact Patty first thing this morning at 8 o'clock and let her know that. And I think, Commissioner Reagan, you may have a couple of questions you want to go and have me answer.
Yeah, I think we should let the public know that we're going to be tabling, so... And I do appreciate James wanting to table it. It was kind of something he's been working on with you.
That's correct. I was contacted by Commissioner King, met with Commissioner Henry, met with yourself, of course, reviewed various services to expand the agreement between the county and Augusta Consulting to work on more economic development projects. Currently, the agreement that you have with Augusta Consulting now is really heavily focused towards the redevelopment commission work with the Tiff districts and what I do as director of the redevelopment commission. Increasingly though, you see me coming before you, spearheading the bond issues, doing a lot of the economic development work, also bringing tax payments before the county council. That's all economic development work is over and above that of the redevelopment commission. I proposed a contract. I shared that with your legal counsel earlier last week. He had a couple revisions that he made to that agreement. The agreement would effectively hire Augusta Consulting to do or to take the lead and be the lead liaison to the county and to the economic development alliance to spearhead all economic development projects. The focus that I see, business retention and expansion of local industry is very important and I'd like to see more of that happen. I think that we would be well-served to see more of those opportunities. We're all familiar with startup businesses and the success of the county and startup businesses throughout the United States. You know, those are tough, tough prospects to foster and to grow. There is low-hanging fruit right here now that we work on every day, but those efforts need to be expanded, quite frankly. So that's the direction that the agreement would take. And I would propose to get into more detail with you on that next month unless you have other questions.
Well, Brad, I do know that you've been around here and your family had a business and you redeveloped a lot of land or put in subdivisions and so you know how businesses are.
Right.
And you do need help.
Yes.
And we do have money in our edit plan that many things that the county commissioners of previous years have done, they made the agreement to send some money to the chamber and to help the chamber, who's a very well-established organization, do our economics. And they pledged this money for three years. Now, I am a team player and I might not agree what former commissioners had done around here or haven't done around here and been happy about it, but I would hate to break an agreement that they're waiting on. But that's just my opinion.
I appreciate all the work you do, Brad. I'm going to make a motion we table this agreement until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you for coming today and explaining that. Okay, now on page two, we'll have an ordinance of 201-5-008. The unapproved alleys down in Monroe Township. And I believe Angie, did you go down and visit with Marta?
Marta and I both did a site visit and met with Mr. Atchison from the granary and...
Oh, I didn't see Marta.
There's Marta. Everything looked fine. There's, they're not going to cause any landlocking or any issues with the roadway and traveling. I think it's a great thing to clean the books, so we both are in agreement. I don't know if you want to add anything, Marta?
Well, okay, I was giving it a final look this morning and this has gone back and forth trying to clean up some minor items with the legals. And I think that the new map that they provided is labeling alley two and three, they should be reversed. So that alley two runs along the north side of lots 15 and 16 and alley three is along the east sides of 13 and 14. And I think somewhere they used to be that way and then somehow with different people working on it, I think it got switched. So, so as far as the map is concerned, and we can do one up that changes that for Denise's records, you know, that shows two and three, and then as far as the ordinance is concerned, the section four should say alley three and section five should say alley two.
So it sounds like this is something maybe we need to table.
Or just change it?
As revised and have them submit the revised documents.
Yeah.
That's 2015-8.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion we approve ordinance 2015-008 with the corrections.
Because the legals are all correct. It's just they're labeling.
They're labeling, okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
So Marta, will you come down and help me?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Marta. Thanks, Angie, for going down to that.
You're welcome.
Okay, then we have a resolution for approval. What would that number be?
That would be 2015-014.
014. Okay, issuing is the bonds of Delaware County Redevelopment Commission. Is that something Brad would like to speak to?
Commissioners, good morning. Before using as a resolution for your approval for the bonds from the Progress Rail Tiff District to assist with the road paving project in South Muncie Industrial Center. This is the complete reconstruction of Delaware Drives, Melquessen Drives and Hamilton Drive. Redevelopment Commission has formally approved this after a regular meeting. They have had a public hearing last Thursday regarding this. There was no written or verbal for or against the project. We also have to go before the county council at next month's meeting and after next meeting. And we appreciate your support on this today. I know that this has been publicized a little bit. Roads in the industrial center are in rough shape. These are dollars that are already in place. This will not need county backup. This will not raise tax rates. This is just using existing dollars that already exist in the South Muncie Industrial Center for pay roads.
And what was the total mileage on this approved?
Well, you know what? You've asked me that before, Sherri.
I think it's three miles, but...
Yeah, it's a round three miles. Right.
Were they able to look at that RFD that I was speaking to about?
Yes, they were, and it is in the works for that to be specked out with the project.
Good.
Hopefully to reduce costs. So from what I've been told from the engineering companies, this amount may come down with the FDR addition.
Would we be able to add another road then if we had like...
We sure could. I think we need to see what the savings is and then address other concerns in the park and try to determine what's the best use of those leftover dollars if there are any. Yes. Because there are other things, there are other needs there that are significant. Yeah. And being in such close proximity to the new 200,000 square foot shell building, you know, any prospect or rover who shows that building, they're inevitably going to take a ride around that industrial park and those roads look like they are today. That's not going to give a good appearance, so we need to get that, we need to get these corrected as soon as possible.
Thank you for your work.
I spoke with an engineer last week. They're going to be doing core samples here in the near future. He's going to let me know so I can meet up with them. And then they'll take those cores, study them, and they'll develop a mix for FDR based off of those cores.
So it might not have the supplement, it might not have what they could use with the FDR?
No, I mean, they're looking into definitely doing the FDR, but they need to do those core samples to know how to make the proper mix to install it.
Yeah, I did speak with probably at the Purdue Road School that you attended. I think Commonwealth Engineering had completed a lot of those FDR projects. I have been in touch with Mike Medoc from Commonwealth, or I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, SNE. SNE. And I put Mike Medoc and SNE in touch with Clint Blackburn at Commonwealth. I'm getting all my engineering companies.
Yeah, there's two in there.
Yeah, we've got a lot of engineering companies. But anyways, those two gentlemen have talked, working on a solution to incorporate the FDR into the project.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'll make a motion we approve resolution 2015-014.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Angie, for working on that also. Okay, now we went down to department heads with the sixth annual fallen heroes from Royal Bridge Ceremony. Mrs. Lackey would fill us in a little bit on that, please.
Yes, I don't know if any of you picked up. There are brochures out there on the table with our agendas today. And I am the treasurer of the Fallen Heroes Bridge Committee and we'd like to invite invite you to attend to show us our sixth annual, excuse me, ceremony. And hopefully Keith, I made sure you got one, maybe we can get a little bourbon to paper. And this annual ceremony, we have one every year and it is to show our appreciation for those heroes that have given the ultimate sacrifice. Their names and their end-of-watch date are on the memorial. And it's also to show our appreciation for those firemen, policemen and EMS personnel that still like to serve and help protect those of us that live and work in Delaware County. So as you will see on the program, we do have a website now and we also have an email address. So please feel free to contact us for any suggestions or questions. Love to see you guys there. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work on that.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And that is at 1:00, right?
Yes, it starts at 1:00.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rogers is over here.
Jason Rogers, Delaware County Management Director. I've got the write-offs for the EMS monthly recap for April through the 30th. Total write-offs were $344,276.63. Motion to accept those write-offs.
So move.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you. Okay, we're down to payments of claims, $957,718.88.
I'll make a motion we pay, please.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Now, if anybody in the audience would like to ask some questions or discussions, we'll accept anyone that would like to come forward and give their name and address. If we do not have anybody, then I'll entertain a motion for a recess.
I'll make a motion we recess.
Oh, do we? I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll step right up.
Deborah Carpenter, Associate Supervisor with the Soil and Water Conservation District. I want to thank the county's prior support for the district's work and for any edit monies that have come our way in the past. I do want the commissioners to be very aware of the district's role and quality of life here in Delaware County. The most thriving, growing communities in our country today are attracting young millennials and folks coming right out of college. They're looking for, not only for solid, good jobs, which the Economic Development Fund is trying to provide in other ways, but they also are seeking high quality of life with a lot of outdoor recreational opportunities. And the cities that are being the most successful in attracting these kind of people, it's not about the school systems for them. And the school systems are very important, but it is about quality of life and a lot of outdoor recreational opportunities. Delaware County is richly blessed with two major river systems that run through it. We have a beautiful reservoir. The district has been working very hard in various fronts to make sure that our waterways are clean and unobstructed so that we may get down the river in a canoe, not be afraid to get in the water because it's so nasty. I grew up in Delaware County. My family farm fronts the River, White River, and I remember as a child that we were told to stay out of it because it smelled awful and it was very dirty. I'm 53 years old. Thankfully, we've made great strides since then. But I think the district's work is extremely important in keeping up this advancement in our natural resources and in order to attract those kind of young, upcoming people who are looking to move and be mobile and come to different communities. We not only have to provide the jobs, but we have to provide those kind of recreational opportunities that they actively seek out. And I think that the Soil and Water District can play a huge part and has been playing a huge part in making Delaware County an attractive place to live for those kind of people. And that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Deborah, I can appreciate that because I had friends that had a house up there eight and on Missinewalk, and I swam in Missinewalk. It was a little muddy back then. And then a few years ago, the Soil and Water did take a very nice tour and I would like to do one on the White River. But we started up at the Strong Farm, I believe, up in that area, and then we came down. And that was what, 12, 15 years ago? And then, and I'll also, when they had the river celebration, I took the tube that they offered. Of course, it was a tractor tube and it should have been a car tube, but I walked out of the river and the mud was this thick, but the water was so clean, I was so impressed. But education is so important. We'll see what we can do, I just can't promise. So have you ever swam in the river up at Alvinian?
Yes.
I know you probably did.
Amazing to be you.
I have a friend, Clayton Zerball, he used to do a lot of canoeing up there. I've never done that. Have to do that maybe. So anybody else want to say anything? And I guess what?
I'll make a motion we recess.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Motion. Thank you.